All right. Here we go. I don't need any.
Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the committee, the whole work session, supporting community through quality public service. We're here today on Tuesday, January 17th, and we have a number of presenters. But before we get to our presentations, the thing I'd like to have you take a look at are the minutes from our work session back in October. You might wonder why there's no November minutes. We had a snowstorm. No one was here. So we're looking back at our October minutes. Any corrections or changes, anything anyone notices? They look very good to me. All right, well, we'll move on to our presentations. And this morning, I'd like to welcome to all of you and also introduce to the public, Major Robert Gorki. He is here to talk to us about chronic wasting disease and deer farm management. He's from Minnesota DNR. And Neva Maxwell and I were talking about this way back in October. It's hard to believe. And so we're really appreciative you have braved the road conditions and are here with us today. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate it, board members, citizens. So I was gonna, I was asked to give a presentation in reference to the DNR's involvement in deer farms, specifically in regards to chronic wasting disease and the legislative summary that was required of the DNR upon legislative approval of that. And I'll get into that in a little bit. So I have a presentation for everybody. I've given this presentation several times in several different forms. I don't want to put my back to anybody. Is it okay if I stand?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I'll speak loud. So I try to go around the state whenever requested. I don't go and ask anybody if they want it, if they, if they ask me. We certainly, as the DNR, will facilitate that. I am not a biologist. I'm not a scientist by any means. I'm an enforcement officer with the state. I was tasked with coordinating the deer farm CWD response when the legislature gave us authority back in July of 2021. So this is kind of a summary that I gave the legislature. It's been updated several times, several, several times, to include additional information that we've learned since doing the legislative report, as well as just current up-to-date comings and goings with the legislature and what the DNR and the Board of Animal Health has been doing. So I'll start at the beginning. What is chronic wasting disease? You can find all this information. You guys have been given a copy from the CDC, so I won't go over it verbatim. But this is from the CDC's website. It's essentially, chronic wasting disease is a transmissible prion. It is not a virus. It's not a bacteria that basically gets into a deer's central nervous system and churns it like the word says, spongy form encephalopathy. It turns their brains into mush, and they eventually do die. You probably are familiar with moose getting brain worms and how they act. Similar behaviors, completely different illness, but similar type situation. It is, it does affect all cervids. That includes moose, whitetail, elk, mule deer. They all can contract CWD. There is currently no cure and no virus for chronic wasting disease in cervids. All cervids who do contract the disease will eventually die. And the big problem with chronic wasting disease in cervids is that it can take 12, 15, 18, 24 months for a deer to first off show signs of any kind of illness and second of all, to eventually die. They all will die from it. Some have a little bit more tolerance, and we can get into that a little bit later on some of the research that's been going on with that. All animals that do get CWD, excuse me, all cervids that get CWD will die. Their only currently approved method for testing for chronic wasting disease is unfortunately to have to put the deer down, whatever it may be, a moose, elk, whatever, and then they take the lymph nodes out of the base of their skull, as well as the obax portion of the, of the brain. And then they bring it in and they test it. Testing can take anywhere from 24 hours to seven, 14 days. We're finding that out when we're testing tens of thousands of deer for the DNR now that the more tests they got, the longer they take. The CWD prions spread from animal to animal through bodily fluids like feces, saliva, blood, urine, or direct contact. Essentially, if they're eaten out of a pile of the same food, a little bit of saliva gets in there, the other animal eats that, ingested will ultimately come down with CWD. Once introduced to an area or farm, again, this applies to whether it's a deer farm or in the wild, the CWD protein is contagious within the deer and the populations, and it spreads very quickly. Believe it or not, deer are very social animals. They do have a lot of interaction with each other, being a herd species and the interactions that they have. The big problem, too, is that CWD prions remain in the soil and in the plants and stuff that grow out of that soil for years and years and years, 20-plus years or longer. Current regulations, when we do have a farm that does have CWD, they have to maintain fencing around that farm for five years. The DNR's been pushing to increase that to 10 years. So even if that farmer sells it or whoever sells it, those fences have to stay up on that farm to prevent animals from going in there because that soil is contaminated. The CDC does urge people not to eat meat from a CWD positive animal. I will say that as of right now, there is no known or proven link between humans getting CWD and from eating animals or other kind of, you know, interaction with it. With that said, it's the same type of disease as the Creutzfeldt-Jacob syndrome, Jacob Kreutzfeldt's disease. There are many other CWD, or excuse me, prion-type diseases of the same nature that humans can get, and they have done testing, although not completely proven. Spider monkeys eating contaminated CWD meat, again, off the CDC's website, that they do end up getting a prion-type disease. So all of these animals here have CWD. The top two examples, I added this slide, I think it's very important. The top two examples show what animals look like towards the later stages of having CWD. These bottom three, all of these deer have CWD or likely have CWD at the time these were taken, but you wouldn't know them from any other deer. The problem is these deer are still shedding that prion into the environment, whether that's through feces, saliva, whatever it may be, just the same as these top ones are. And you could shoot this animal or hit it on, hit it on the road, whatever it may be, and unless you get it tested, you're not going to probably know that it had CWD. So how did we get here? Why am I talking to you? Why is the DNR involved with this? For years and years and years, the Board of Animal Health managed deer farms across the state of Minnesota. It was not the Department of Natural Resources. However, there was an incident, I'm sure you guys read about, a few years ago up in Beltrami County where a deer farmer, licensed deer farmer, had CWD on their farm, was illegally dumping on county land their deer carcasses, which is against Board of Animal Health's rules, and a lot of those carcasses ended up having CWD. So he's illegally dumping them on that landscape. The University of Minnesota went out there amongst all the other researchers and scientists that went out there, found several of the bones, found several of the carcasses. Those bones, some of them did test positive for CWD. In fact, the scavenger scavenged on that pile, grabbed some of those bones, moved them, don't know how many exact yardage, you know, 200 yards, found some bones there, tested those, they had CWD, and the soil underneath that had CWD. So needless to say, once it gets out into our environment, it's extremely, extremely hard to manage and very costly to try to manage. So that deer farm is this one right here, and I think this is really important about the whole thing with deer farms. That's that Beltrami County farm. They were, they received the deer from this farm, for sure, one of them that was positive from this farm. This farm, we call it kind of a source herd, contaminated seven deer farms, just through the business of which deer farms do it. They move deer around. It's a business, buying and selling. Seven deer farms were exposed. So that we know about this point. So again, it's, it's very easy to, to manage a business when we, we track their stuff and you can see how quickly it can spread. So the prions, you know, like I said, we're on public lands in that county. So what, what happened? What, what affected them? I forgot, I added this one. So why does it matter? I don't think I need to tell people up here in Cook County, why does it matter? Deer hunting is a tradition, cultural values, everything. They've just updated it. Deer hunting in Minnesota generates over $700 million every year in economic impact to the state, more than 12,000 jobs. It's part of Minnesota's $14 billion annual economic activity from the outdoors, whether that's boating, recreating, cross-country skiing, whatever, $14 billion. People in deer hunting specifically, $750 million. I personally believe it's a lot more. How many people do you know own hunting properties across the state that buy it solely for the purpose of hunting, enjoying it, doing that type of thing? And if they can no longer do that, what does that mean? I don't know. I leave that question to you. It's obviously critical to our indigenous peoples and their cultures and their way of life, and it is, of course, a primary source of lean protein for thousands of families, including mine. So effective July 1st, the legislature gave the DNR concurrent authority with the Board of Animal Health through this creation of this subdivision of Minnesota Statute 35.155. Essentially, they said, you need to go in here, do a complete audit of the deer farm industry, in particular, I'm gonna back up, for whitetail deer only. There was other deer farms out there. They gave us whitetail deer farms only. It is by far the most common deer farm that there is, but there are elk farms and some other fallow deer type farms. On February, they mandated on February 1st that we give them a summary of how the agencies work together, including any challenges, assess the ongoing challenges to managing chronic wasting disease in the state, and recommendations for statute and rule changes to help better manage the disease. So that's what we did. I'm gonna breeze through a little bit of this. Just so you know, as of July 1st, there's 176 deer farms. As of right now, there's less than 130. About half of those are what we call a commercial deer farm versus a hobbyist deer farm. Hobbyist is a person has one or two deer as a pet. They have no business interest in it. It's just a pet. It's a, it's a, like a dog or a cow or whatever you want to call it. About half of them have a commercial aspect to it, and they can buy, sell, trade, do that type of thing if they do. During that time, I was assigned to this at, in July 1st. We had a six-month goal of inspecting 40 of those 176 farms. We actually beat that by quite a bit. And then we took all the information we did from going to these farms, talking to the farmers, working with the Board of Animal Health, looking at the rules and the regulations from a purely management way. Again, the Board of Animal Health, I'm not going to pick on the Board of Animal Health. They do a lot of fantastic things, but they're focused with what's inside the fence. They're focused on the herd. They do a great job with swine, poultry, cattle, whatever it may be, but they're advocates. They're not an enforcement agency, but unfortunately, in this role, they were, they were meant to be an enforcement agency and, and some of those challenges that we found out, that I'll talk about here in a little bit. The DNR came in, it's how do we contain from the outside? We're trying to protect the outside from the inside versus them, the board looking at from the inside, trying to protect them from the outside. So different perspectives is going to give you different, different views and different opinions. Well, while this was going on, unfortunately, there was another CWD positive farm found. This one was in Wisconsin, which wouldn't normally get people too worked up, except that they had sold 387 deer to 40, 40 facilities in seven states, including, surprise, surprise, three deer farms in Minnesota. The problem was that the deer, if they move from these farms, well, I'll go to the next slide. It's a little bit complicated to, I'll back up. I'll do this one first. I apologize. So the DNR said, hey, wait a minute. There's a lot of deer out there that we don't know what they, what happened to them. If they went down to Nebraska and then they come back up, because believe it or not, Minnesota imports hundreds of deer a year, we need to make sure that those deer are passing through another facility that maybe had a deer on there that had CWD or whatever it may be. We need more time to investigate. So the DNR initiated a statewide temporary movement on deer farms. Was widely unpopular with the industry, of course, because this is during their, their peak business time during the fall, but we needed time to work with the Board of Animal Health, US Department of Agriculture, through their Wildlife Health Services, Wisconsin's equivalent to the Board of Animal Health in several other states, trying to figure out where all these deer went, because we do receive a lot of deer from a lot of other states. The DNR ended up exhausting all reasonable efforts to establish risk to Minnesota deer herds. I'm gonna here and just stand and tell you that we're not satisfied with the investigation because depending on state to state to state, they vary on how they approach it, and I'll get into it with this next slide. So essentially, on December 2nd, we rescinded the temporary movement order in an effort to just move forward and try to get something permanent going on. This is kind of where interstate movement, these are the different areas of the state, excuse me, of the country and of Canada that have CWD. As you can see, heavily up here, Alberta, Saskatchewan, Colorado Rockies, Wisconsin and Pennsylvania is predominantly there. I'm not going to pick on Wisconsin. Minnesota and Wisconsin are taking two different stances on CWD, and we've had wildly different results through that. So to get back to it, why was the DNR so concerned about those 387 deer? Well, backing up, four of those deer on the farm tested positive for CWD out of that 400 or so. Here's a list of all the different states that received them. Wisconsin sold, they do a good job testing. They had three more positive CWD. Illinois, Kansas, North Dakota, Oklahoma, Pennsylvania, they don't test for them. So any deer that died for unusual causes, they're not required to test them. 77% of the deer sold were untested, and unfortunately, we receive deer every year from those same deer farms in those different states that have passed through deer from the Wisconsin herd that we don't know if they ever had CWD and ultimately infested that herd there. So it's really unfortunate. We had of the 77, excuse me, 23% of the deer, we had seven positives out of that 400. I guarantee you, out of that other, you know, 300, there's more positives. Seven of them got that. So anyway, we, we submitted our legislative report. We identified rules and stuff that I'll go over here in just a second. We are continuing to work with the Board of Animal Health to this day, trying to manage deer farms, because we did have a gridlock last year in the legislature, as you guys are well aware, and we're continuing to do, do co-authorial efforts and maximize our efficiency, and I can certainly talk to that. So during that time, we inspected 50 farms. This is what the DNR found in general, really, really quick. We had 30, 30% violation, violation rate of failures on their farms. So they knew the DNR was coming, everybody was very concerned about the DNR coming, and yet we still found 30% of the farms to be failures. And that could be anything from fencing violations, their fence is too short, their deer aren't tagged as they're supposed to, they don't have redonigating, they're not testing their deer for CWD as required. More concerned with the DNR is that 70% of the farms were in areas where deer are found, right? I mean, we're not talking in the middle of a concrete jungle. We're talking in the, in the woods and in the older Minnesota. We had 44% of the farms had direct, evidence of direct contact between deer inside the fence and outside of the fence touching noses. You can see that there's one fence, they, they try to get at each other, whether it's rut, whatever it may be, the food pile that's on the side of the, the fence there where the deer from the wild they're trying to get at. 46% of those deer farms actually fed and watered them right on the fence line where wild deer could potentially be attracted to it and eat off of it. So what do we want to do? What kind of challenges are we still facing? Well, we're still facing a lot of them. We, we need to be clear and consistent and disciplined in inspections and adhere to the process from inspectors. Essentially, if I have a violation, I can't just say, hey, you can't do that and move on or fix this. We need to enforce the rules. We have the rules for a reason. We have a 30% violation rate. Something's not working. So we need to be consistent with our enforcement. We need to follow through with that when, and when violations are appropriate and fines are appropriate, and we have been doing that. New scheduling inspection process. So if I call you up and you have a deer farm and I say, hey, I'd like to come out next week and take a look at your farm. Yeah, it's not good. I want you to give me a call in a couple of months. They can deny you time and time again. They only have to be inspected one time per year. So most of the time, it doesn't happen every time, but there's many producers that push us off till December 31st, December 30th, whatever it may be. And if you have a violation or if you know something's wrong, not that everybody's a violator by any means, you're not going to agree to have us come out there. So we need to look at a different process of scheduling these surprise ones, 24-hour notices, things of that nature, that stuff that we're, we're currently working with the, with the board on doing as well. Current review of fencing tagging inspection requirements. Are the rules adequate? Even if they're properly enforced, are these rules adequate? Is it going to prevent deer from touching nose to nose if there's a single fence? If, if the deer don't have to be tagged until they're seven months old, does that, does that work for deer that get escaped? You know, so really looking at the rules, are they appropriate for what we need to do, even if they are being followed? And then streamlining and modernization of the reporting requirements. This is probably one of the biggest issues. The problem is, is the industry is very, we'll say, old school. Everything's pen and paper, which is great, but when you're sending in inventory reports that take two or three months for those inventory reports to get entered into our electronic licensing or record system, that becomes a problem. I come onto your facility and I say, hey, John, you got 20 deer. No, I got 32 deer. I sent my paperwork back in a month ago. Maybe he did, maybe he didn't. When a deer dies in the facility, they have 14 days to report that. Do they send in a piece of paper in the mail? Did it get sent in? Usually, but you know, a lot of issues there. Maybe we need to go to more of an electronic instant type recording process, which again is difficult for, you know, a never aging deer farm producer group. Communication. We need to continue to improve education and communicate with producers. I think everybody understands that. Since that initial 50 inspections, this year alone, the DNR did 88 inspections, including many by ourselves. We have not received a single complaint from a deer producer. In fact, we have received written thank yous, written appreciations to our director, our chief, things like that. You know, there's a lot of misconception that the DNR is the big bad guy that's coming in here to shut the deer farms and everything. We absolutely are not trying to do that. There is a time and a place to do that when somebody's violating the rules, but we want these people to succeed. That's not getting out there. You know, the, we've been painted into a picture of being the bad guy, and again, I stand before you here explaining the concerns and the problems that we do have with the industry, but that's not what, what I'm here to do. I'm here to make sure that the rules are being followed and we're doing the best we can to protect the wild deer on the wild cervids in the state, because that's, that's my job. That's what I'm tasked to do. We need to continue improving communication between the DNR and the Board of Animal Health on all issues related to CWD, deer farms and deer farm escapes. That is a big part that I'll talk about here again in just a little bit is the escapes. But we do have some difficulties with that. We do have some difficulties because we have different objectives. We have different goals. We're trying to protect the wild deer. They're trying to protect the herd and the industry. So you'll have some conflict there, but we have been working in good faith with them. They have been working in good faith with us. We're trying to find rules and compromises where we can, where we can make, you know, getting closer to our goals. I wouldn't say we reach our goals, but we're, we're trying to get some kind of middle ground that we can both agree to. And then we need to continue to educate and inform the public, hunters and user groups, and all government agencies like I am here on CWD issues. Work with these agencies to ensure consistent messaging and appropriate. The public has a, has a misconception that all of this is the deer farmer's fault, and it's not. Hunters have a part to play, the citizens, governments, everybody has a part to play with this, because I can tell you right now, deer farms is not the only vector where CWD spreads across the state by any means. Now, I do have slides on that as well. So some of the regulation changes that we did, currently, under the board's rules, if you have a problem with your fence or a gate or whatever, maybe you have 45 days to fix that fence. Could you imagine that? Your fence is down, you have a problem, you have 45 days. We do have, we do usually make them make temporary repairs where possible. We're trying to reduce that to 14. Pretty reasonable. Require whitetail deer to be officially tagged within 14 days of birth. From going to these farms, they're easy to catch when they're not that young. They do recover very well from it. Currently, they're not required until October 31st. So that fawn might be born in April, whatever it may be, May, June, who knows? It is a little bit different in the deer farm industry when they do give birth, but they don't have to be. So if a fawn, which is this little, gets through the fence, which happens all the time, there's no tag on it. Fortunately, they usually come back to their mothers, but not always. Require all whitetail deer facilities to have a physical inspection every two years to allow the reading of your tags. Currently, they only have to be read every three years. So I go to a farm and I count your 10 deer, all I have to do is see that they have ear tags. Physical inspection, they actually have to be read those numbers. There are USDA numbers that are nationally recorded, so that's only every three years. We want it every two. Fairly reasonable, but it's something that we're, we're pushing for. Proposed importation ban on whitetail deer from any state or province who currently has CWD in farms or in the wild. So right now, the way the Board of Animal Health has the rules is it's by county by county. So if a county has CWD, can't bring deer from that county here. But if it's right across the line, that's okay. In this Maple Hill, Maple Hills farm case, the county next to it had CWD, but their county didn't. This wouldn't have happened under, under that different regulation change. And I'll let you know that the DNR is pushing for that in this current legislative session. So that is something that we're hopeful will get passed. Movement of deer restricted if producer fails any, to test their deer. So a lot of these farmers, unfortunately, or some of the farmers, will have deer that die. They're required by law to get them tested for CWD. It doesn't happen all the time. In fact, we have quite a high failure rate on that, on some farms. If that's the case, you should not be allowed to move your deer. If you're not, are not doing that, why did the deer die? We're not talking about butchered deer typically, right? Where deer falls down and dead in a, in a field or in the woods on their, on their farm. Why they do it, I mean, those are the ones we really want to see, and those are the ones unfortunately that we're not. There are sometimes extenuating circumstances, which we can understand, that they're gone on vacation or whatnot, but if you're not testing, you don't get to move your deer. And then require tests, testing of all farms, whitetail deer six months or older, and report the deaths within seven days. Currently, if a deer dies in a farm, you're required to tell us within 14 days, and it only has to be tested if it's over 12 months old. Well, deer certainly can have CWD under 12 months old. So escapes. This is probably one of the biggest problems, and I'll, and we do have some good examples. It just happened this last year. In the last six months, when the DNR took over, there was eight cervid escape incidents, seven of which were whitetail, where they, they escaped from the farm through either an unlocked gate, fence was down, whatever it may be. In 2022, we had eight additional cervid escapes. This year, this, excuse me, we're in January now. This last year, we had eight cervid escape incidents. That doesn't mean eight deer escaped, eight different incidents. Some of them were five deer, some of them were 14 deer, some of them were one deer. These deer get out, unfortunately, it does happen, and the DNR gets to be, play the bad guy, and if they're not recovered within 24 hours, and we're able to dispatch them and get them tested, because they pose such a significant risk to the, the wild herds. In the past five years, there's been over 60 escape incidents totaling 158 cervids. In the past 10 years, we've got 159 escape incidents. I can tell you, most of those deer are never recovered. It's very unfortunate, but probably we're lucky, 50% of the times, whitetail deer that we're able to find them, dispatch them, or hunter dispatches of, or we ever get any kind of notice that those deer were recovered in one way or another. So that, that is concerning, of course, with those deer on our landscape. So we're going to continue to work on developing more effective reporting, response, recovery, dispatching procedures. As it sits now, if you're a deer farmer and a deer escapes from your farm, you're aware of it, you're required by law to tell us that that deer has escaped, what you're also going to get a fine. So if you're able to get that deer back on your own and nobody finds out about it, that'll get a fine, and nobody's the wiser. Of these last eight cervid escapes, I think three were reported by the farmers. Otherwise, it's from the public. Otherwise, it's from a conservation officer, neighbor, whatever it may be. People see those, you know, fortunately, red, yellow, whatever it may be, ear tagging their deer, and if the hunters are very much well aware of what a deer farm, farmed deer looks like, they tell us more often than the producers do, because they don't want to get a fine. So maybe need to look at fixing that system. So I've been talking about deer farms and, and all the different issues with CWD spreading within them. Really quickly, what is the DNR doing with wild deer herds and monitoring it? Because it is certainly a big vector. We continue to investigate sick deer. Anytime there's a sick deer, we're supposed to be bringing them in, especially in areas where they have symptoms or signs of being infected by some kind of disease. We do get all of those tested. We test deer year-round. Last year, 2021, we spent $2.9 million on CWD, wild CWD-related activities. That includes the testing, all of these programs that you've probably heard on the news or on the radio for southeastern Minnesota in particular. Now we have it in Grand Rapids where we're testing deer. Every time we find a new wild deer that has CWD, it costs the state of Minnesota between $300,000 to $500,000 a year to, to monitor, to test, whether that's through sharpshooters, whether that's through increased hunts, testing, whatever it may be. And, and part of that, too, is the DNR's efforts to restrict the importation of cervid carcasses into the state from other states. If I want to go out to Wyoming, which has a lot of CWD, and I shoot a nice mule deer, I can't bring that carcass back to Minnesota and get it, and get it mounted. I would have to get it mounted out there, bring it in, or debone meat, whatever maybe we have restrictions on that. Incredibly unpopular for western hunters, certainly. Who doesn't want to bring their trophy that they just brought back to their friend, the taxidermist, or whatever it may be? But we need to do our part, just like the deer farmers need to do their part to try and restrict and stop to spread the CWD. Wildlife enforcement have hired and assigned staff specifically. So I no longer coordinate the day-to-day stuff for CWD. We have a dedicated staff with wildlife and enforcement. We currently have twenty conservation officers that are trained and signed off to go around and inspect deer farms across the state with the Board of Animal Health. And I just oversee enforcement's response to it amongst my other various tasks now. But we have dedicated staff to do this. It's not going away. CWD is not going away in our state, but how, how it looks in twenty years will depend on, on what we do. DNR's imposed restrictions on deer feeding and other kinds of deer attractants in CWD zones. Again, incredibly unpopular, but we have to do it. We don't want deer concentrating onto a small pile of food wherever possible, because that's just going to get that saliva, that nose-to-nose contact all the more. DNR's enhanced penalties for baiting, including firearm forfeiture, increased fines, revocations of future hunting privileges. Again, we're trying to dissuade people from doing that. DNR practically educates, notifies the public to your health issues, including CWD, voluntary testing opportunities. This last year, the DNR did a really good job of trying different things, and I think it's going to take a series of things. But we now have test kits that you can get mailed to you, sent to you. You shoot your deer, there's instructions, YouTube videos, you can take those link notes, send them in. No longer does the DNR need to do the labor intensive bringing it down to some facility, having them do it. Maybe they're there, maybe they're not doing all that stuff. But you can have peace of mind knowing that your deer's been tested, hopefully tested negative, because of course people will contact you immediately if it's not, that your family's eating good meat that's not infected with CWD. So we need to continue to do that, working with sportsmen's groups, numerous media outlets, media leaders, and different sportsmen. We've partnered up with taxidermists across the state. These taxidermists are now taking, a lot of them, not all of them, but a lot of them are taking samples for us. Again, the most likely deer that's going to have it is those large mature bucks, those old bucks that have been around, they're moving around a lot. They're the ones that are going to have it at the highest prevalence. These taxidermists are now taking samples for us, so that's really good. We're partnering with them, making it a little bit more convenient for hunters. We get this CWD suspected one, we, over in northwestern Minnesota, over by the fertile area, a hunter self, took his self-test kit, sent it in completely on his own, this is before the DNR had those available to him. And a deer over there, actually two deer became, were tested positive with CWD over in that fertile Minnesota. We don't know how it got there, and that's certainly something that could be up for debating questions there, so. I'll stop there, I can talk for hours and hours and hours, but I, I want to give you guys the opportunity to ask any specific questions as it may be germane to you. I will say that Cook County does not currently have any deer farms that I am aware of, or at least not whitetail deer farms. The closest one is over in Tower, in Tower-ish area. So hopefully, it, it, it's less of a chance of, of a deer farm having it, that far away from you guys up here. Moose are very much prevalent to it, I think that's very important to understand up here. The various Ojibwe bans across the state of Minnesota have come out strongly against deer farms. They've written letters to the governor, to the DNR, to the Board of Animal Health, asking for either a buyout, moratorium on new deer farms, various different levels of that. This year, we will have probably a lot of movement on deer farm industry in the state. Several state representatives, including some chairs and some committees, have made it one of their main priorities this year. And of course, as we're well aware, we don't have a divided House this year, House Senate. So there is potential for movement, but nothing is guaranteed. I think we all know that, we were expecting a lot of good legislation last year at the DNR's legislative report. This legislative report was actually done two years after an independent auditor's report of the Board of Animal Health and the deer farm industry, which came up with very similar issues that had nothing to do with the DNR, was before the DNR's involvement about concerns and issues that they had. So there's hopefully a lot of movement, a lot of energy for that. We did just recently have a couple more Minnesota deer farms that did test positive for CWD, fortunately down in southeastern Minnesota. I think that's about it. I guess one thing I would, I would point out to everybody is, I have said many times, CWD is not going anywhere. Down in southeastern Minnesota, where we consider it prevalent, it's about a one percent rate of deer have CWD. You go across the border to Wisconsin, we have some counties that are fifty, sixty percent, as you can see from the map. It's very much spread through central and southern Wisconsin, with a lot of their deer herds having, again, you know, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty percent of their deer have it. We're still down that one percent there. The few other areas across the state, they're onesies, twosies, and we're really hoping by being aggressive with it that we can limit that spread and hopefully nip it before it gets any worse. And we continue to monitor that, so. I'll stand for any questions. I know there's a lot of rambling, a lot of stock about a disease.
One of the things I appreciate is just knowing that the CDC does something other than COVID, that they're dealing with, with chronic wasting disease. And what struck me is some of the statistics you shared, that forty-four percent with an issue with closer direct contact, the thirty percent violation rate, to me, that's just appalling. And it makes me concerned about our deer herd here and our moose population as well. And, you know, has my head thinking about what can we do to really prevent and prohibit that from getting into Cook County? So I appreciate all the data and the statistics.
Yeah, absolutely, I, I appreciate that, and I think, you know, wild deer do move across the state. You know, they do spread out as they do, but, you know, you'll get a lone buck, let's just say it has CWD. It may move five miles, ten miles, twenty miles, whatever it may be. In one day, a deer from a deer farm in a contaminated herd can move three hundred miles. And that's what, exactly what we saw in Beltran County. In one day, by human interaction, it can move hundreds and hundreds of miles and spread a disease that otherwise is not on the landscape. Human interaction, whether that's through hundreds, whether that's through deer farm movement, whatever it may be, that is where we see these diseases leap and jump and spread a lot more quickly than, or through the, through natural reasons of, of concern about that.
Does severe cold have, like, sub-zero temperatures have any impact on locking it down in the soils?
In the soil, that's a great question. So the prion itself in the soils, no, it is extremely resistant to pretty much everything. It's a protein, so can't incinerate these carcasses and kill the protein. So in these commercial incinerators, they get however, you know, thousand degrees hot, it will not kill it. Extreme cold will not kill it. They can't use bleach to kill it, other chemicals, you know, if it's on a, on a surface or something like that. The only thing that currently, the way we dispose of carcasses that have CWD is at University of Minnesota's alkaline vat that dissolves the stuff into some goo. But that's what it's for, is for denaturing and dissolving all of this stuff. And then, of course, they even control that waste stream as well. So cold won't, heat won't, UV light, most, most cleaners and chemicals will not kill the prion. And that's been very, very well documented, so. We do still try to make an effort to clean up.
So what does a butchering facility do if they find out?
That is a million-dollar question that hasn't been answered. Certain farms are producers, certain butchers take in deer. Some of them now refuse to take in deer because of that concern. They want their USDA certification, they want to keep their cattle and their main sources of income free of that. The DNR has encouraged them to use separate equipment. Of course, try to clean it as best you can, but you're absolutely right. If a deer, if you have a deer at the butcher and it goes through the saw and your deer's up next, absolutely, it's very, very possible that CWD prions can be spread into that.
I've always been concerned here in Cook County about neighbors who feed the deer, and especially a winter like this where it's hard for the deer to get around. What effect does that have?
Yeah, so a lot of people feed deer. Be perfectly honest, if it's not an area that's in a CWD monitoring zone, the DNR doesn't say it's illegal, but absolutely, any artificial concentration of deer in a small source, you're going to increase the likelihood of spread of any kind of diseases. No different than anything else. Some of the arguments we've heard, what about food plots? What about farm places where they're eating hay bales, whatever it is? There is an agriculture industry in the state of Minnesota, and we can't get in front of that. We can't stop any, all human-made sources of artificial concentration. But feeding, things like that, absolutely, those are things that are low economic impact to stop if that's what people choose to do. All of the DNR has to step in and tell them not to, because it is very much a concern in those areas where there is CWD.
So you showed the outdoor rec impact dollar-wise as well as the deer hunting industry, isn't it?
Yep.
What is the economic impact of deer farms?
Great question, that is a great question. So I'm going to give you my opinion. It's an opinion, because I think that's going to be something that's going to be heavily debated in this legislative session. Some of the bills they're looking at is buying all the deer farms out. So we're talking about a hundred and thirty farms. And I will back up just a little bit as, as our officers are going out to these farms. And I'm not saying that this is right, wrong, or other ways, but a lot of them are just sitting waiting for a bio. Waiting for a potential bio. That doesn't mean they're bad, that doesn't mean that there is a bio, but what does a bio mean? Does that mean more money for me? I, I don't know. So again, there's a hundred and thirty farms, roughly half of them are commercial, okay? Those are the ones that are generating money. The other ones are one deer, two deer, they're pets, I would say a very little economic impact. We have a whitetail deer doe is typically worth about three hundred to five hundred dollars, depending on genetics. Like, if it's a big buck genetic one, it certainly could be a lot more. Some of these deer are being sold for three thousand, five thousand, ten thousand dollars. You've got enough money, you can buy it. And so what is it? That's really hard to say. I've heard numbers of twenty million dollars total economic impact. I think the deer farmers would say it's much higher. Is it, do I get multiple years? That doe is going to give me multiple big bucks potentially? So there's a lot of different ways you can skin it, but the economic impact has generally been quoted as under twenty-five million dollars annually for all deer farms in the state of Minnesota. I wouldn't take those numbers hundred percent accurate, but that's the best I can give you.
Explain what a deer farm does, because people are paying the deer to what?
Well, this is where I get, I get a little snarky, and I'm gonna try to not, I'm gonna try to not. So there's a couple of different businesses. Some farms sell doe urine for, asterisk, for cents for, for whitetail deer hunters to use to attract those big bucks. So there is a urine business. There is some, some velvet business for, in particular, like elk and some things like that, some of the Asian countries like some of that stuff. Some of them are straight meat-producing type places, which is pretty low value. I'm not trying to disrespect deer, but you put a lot of money into a deer, feeding it in a pen, you know, and you're going to get three hundred dollars for it. That's not, you're not going to get rich doing that. The big money is selling trophy bucks. You can go and buy a hundred and eighty-inch Boone and Crockett buck, a two-hundred-inch Boone and Crockett buck. You got the money, you can write a check and go inside that hundred-by-hundred pen, he'll open the gate. You can shoot it with your gun, take all the pictures you want, you can put it on your wall, and you're the best hunter in the world, because you shot a hundred and eighty-inch deer that I will never shoot in the, in the wild, because they just don't find them out there very often. I'm not that good of a hunter. But, but yeah, it's, 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 it's a sport for shooting big animals, generally speaking.
So it's like shooting milk cows in a pasture?
It's, the way the Board of Animal Health looks at it, it's exactly the same as shooting a cow, yes. Because it's, it's livestock, it is livestock. But, does anybody need to know that if it's on your wall? Again, I'm trying to temper my snarkiness, but, but it is. That is, if you go, if you Google on your computer or phone, you know, big buck farm opportunities, ranches, we have, you know, maybe fifteen, twenty of them in the state, and they'll have pictures of these giant bucks that are bigger than anything you'll ever see in the wild in your life, and they'll have a price on it, maybe a name, and you can go buy him and you can go shoot him, any time of the year, if you got the money.
So it's largely an industry for the more affluent?
Uh, generally speaking, yeah.
Not saying that the farmers aren't by any means, but the customers.
Correct, yeah, and, and a lot of these places raise big bucks to sell to these ranches. So there's very, you know, like I said, maybe fifteen, twenty-ish ballpark ranches across the state that, that shoot these deer. A lot of them fill the needs for them. I got thirty guys willing to shoot these, I only have twenty bucks, I need to buy ten more to bring them in here to shoot these big bucks.
And they're shooting them in a confined space?
They have to shoot them in a confined space, in a certified licensed pen, yeah. The pen can be kind of big, if you want to hunt within an acre or two. I mean, you get to sit there until it comes in, and if he doesn't want to come in, again, a little snarky, I can pour a pile of corn on there that I can. So it, it is an industry, people do it, it's, there is a lot of money. Texas is a, hundreds and hundreds of millions of dollars in economic impact on these types of farms, exotic farms. I'm sure you guys have seen them on, on the news or the internet. If Texas shut down deer farms, it would be no more deer farm industry in the state or in the country, because they kind of, they kind of run the business. They want Minnesota deer, so they'll buy a lot of Minnesota deer, because we have big bodies. I don't know if you've ever seen the Texas deer, generally speaking, they look like big dogs. But they get some of that Minnesota blood in there, they get bigger bodies, they look, they're worth more money. So it's all about money, it's all about big animals and big bodies, so.
I didn't see if Texas had any cases up there, maybe that was.
Uh, they do, they do. They did buy from that Wisconsin farm, I guess I'd, I'd have to look into and see, but.
I have about as much, you know, I'm going to be crying and sleepless nights for this industry as much as big tobacco, I think.
He doesn't want to be snarky?
Yeah, yeah. No, I, I, I don't want to, I certainly don't want to put all the CWD blame on deer farmers, because that is not the case. We have proven that there are cases where deer farmers have illicitly done things and exposed wild deer to CWD. And that, again, is why I'm here. Hunters and through other means certainly can spread CWD. The issue is, is, as you can see in Wisconsin, the Rockies, Pennsylvania, once it's out in the, in the environment, it is so extremely hard to contain. And that's just the bottom line of it, you know, that, what is that old saying, an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure? It is a hundred percent true in this case. And I'm not here to tell you that we will ever beat CWD on our landscape. You know, there is a lot of good research being done by the university and several other places on CWD, on testing, better testing methods. There is a rectal biopsy test that they're working on that is a test that they can do on an animal while it's still alive. It's not a hundred percent accurate, but it's, you know, go home, it's sixty percent accurate. But if you test every animal in a herd at sixty percent accuracy, you're going to have a fairly good confidence that, that a herd doesn't have it. So there are some opportunities there. And I'm not here to tell you, if, if it wasn't for the, the health risk to the wild herds, I, I don't see an issue with, with deer farms. If it isn't exposing that, I guess the, the thing I always leave with people is, if you shoot a deer and you know it has CWD, are you going to feed that to your children or grandchildren? And if the answer is, yes, I have no problem with it, then so be it. But if it's, no, I don't, think about what impact that's going to have on you, your, your family, your children, your grandchildren. This is a serious disease that's not going to be easily resolved, solved. And I think we need to look at whatever methods we can to try to limit that spread. And if that means doing something with deer farms, that's what the legislature is here to do, that's what this county board can choose to do if they so wish to do so. I think it's important that if anybody has strong opinions about this, that they do talk to their representatives, send letters, do whatever they want to do, that's certainly within their, their purview to do that. Or if you think that there's nothing wrong, or that the DNR needs to stay out, then so be it. But I'm here because of the risk to our wild deer and the wild service that I, I wish I didn't have to be.
Well, Major Gorki, we really appreciate the fact that you've brought so much information to us. I'm just going to ask, given the time, are there other questions that we have that we would like to have answered? Commissioner Hahn?
Yeah, absolutely.
So during the hunting season, there was a campaign to have hunters get tested. Do you have statistics on how many in Cook County were tested?
I don't, but I can get you that information. That'd be easy enough to, to find out, because there'll be self-reporting tests up here. We didn't, you know, no CWD up here, you know, that we're aware of, so we want to keep it that way. You know, I don't remember how many deer, the final total, you know, we're generally in that fifteen to twenty thousand deer we test annually over the last couple of years for CWD. But I'll, I'll find out, I'll see if we have that information about what Cook County has for self-reporting tests. Looking at it next year, I think the DNR is going to do that again. I encourage anybody, if they're interested, to go on our DNR website, order the test, they'll mail them right to you. You want to get two, one for your brother, cousin, whatever it may be, happy to do it, they're free. Send them in and we'll get them tested, and we'll get a call, obviously, if there's issues.
Mr. Mouse?
I have a list of questions still coming out, whatever. So spider monkey can have it. Humans have not yet had it, so that we know of.
That, that we know of, there is research in, in particular, Wisconsin, and again, you could look at the CDC, I don't want to paraphrase it wrong, where there's a statistically a higher percentage of hunters that consume CWD, but potentially contaminated meat that have that Jacob Korchfeldt disease. But again, I'm not saying that this is, is, is across that line, but that is part of why CWD, CDC does not want it, because they can leap those lines, as we've seen in different Covid's and other things, maybe bird flu. Wolves? Wolves, uh, canines, as of right now, they do not get CWD, there's no research to that. With that said, could wolves consume a CWD-positive deer and excrete that? Would that feces potentially have it?
Yeah.
I would say it's certainly reasonable, I don't know for, for a fact, but.
If bleach, nothing kills the prion, then?
Yeah, that's nuts, absolutely.
Why, why not, why just whitetail for the farms?
Why does the DNR only have whitetail? That was, as maybe you guys are well aware, how politics work. The governor's initiative was to give the DNR all jurisdiction over it, and another group decided that that wasn't good enough, and the compromise was, okay, give them whitetail deer, that has the most issues, have them work on that, and that's where we're at right now. I will tell you that, you know, that they're looking at all cervids in various different bills. But again, the big difference is, we had an elk farm have deer, or an elk escaped. Two elk escaped from a farm in Carlton County. And we found out about it really quick. They, they stick up, never mind the tag, but here's an elk. With that said, I mean, there are places, a lot more places than just northwest Minnesota that have elk. But whitetail. But whitetail deer, they blend in. Those tags do fall out, they legitimately can fall out, they do fall out. And even if, even if it is, they, those red and yellow tags are generally not what they use. They use those little metal, they have like a trapper's tag, basically, and they trap, they tag it, and it's extremely hard to see. So they just blend in better.
One last question, okay, I'm sure. Oh, no, I lost it. Oh, different layers here. The tagging is a USDA tag, right?
It's, it's a USDA approved tag, yep.
USDA approved tag, okay, so the feds are not tracking this at this point, aside from maybe the CDC?
Uh, yes, no, the feds are tracking. So US Department of Agriculture, Animal, Plant, Health Services, AFIS is what their acronym is, I apologize, I don't know what it all is. They coordinate between states. Obviously, Minnesota can't coordinate interstate trade stuff with other states. US Department of Agriculture can, so there is that element there. When we had the Wisconsin farm, USDA was involved and helped facilitate coordinating between the states. So they do that, these tags, if a whitetail deer with a USDA approved tag, and they generally all are, that deer gets killed here, gets killed in California, whatever it is, they can run that number, anybody can. And it will come into this National Identification Management System, NIMS, N-I-I-M-S. And it is registered to that farm, to that person, to that deer, to that. That tag will never be used again, that number will never be used again. Minnesota tags have a certain starting abbreviation, so they know automatically, it's usually a forty-five. But yes, it is anywhere in the state, actually in North America.
Yes, the feds are on it. The state is, you know, as far as counties are concerned, we have jurisdiction over, say, an ordinance limiting or prohibiting farms. Is there any other, the Board of Animals, that's a state agency, right? Is there any other county level things we should be aware of?
No, you did it all right. It's, counties can do any kind of ordinance, zoning, planning, that type of thing. St. Louis County did, Carlton County did, for example. They can also send letters to the governor, to different various committee chairs. Those have been very supportive, I know when the Ojibwe bands did that, it was very supportive and helpful for those efforts. To show, I mean, I think, I think that's important for any legislature. If their constituents are concerned about something and they talk about it, that's important. So I think that's probably the biggest thing. As far as anything else, you know, obviously, we work with our sheriff's office partners for finding these deer, for putting them down, doing what we need to do, make sure they get tested. But no, I don't believe there's any other, unless there's some health stuff that the county might have, but I don't know how that works, to be perfectly honest with you.
Thank you.
You've given us a lot of information, some great ideas, and we'll definitely be further discussing this matter, so we appreciate it. And appreciate getting the information on Cook County and the number of
I'll do my best to get that Cook County information. Maybe I'll just send it to you since I got your email, if that's okay?
Sure.
Yeah, and you, and, yeah, if you guys need anything else, any, have any questions, by all means, come.
Commissioner?
I have a question you might know, and when we have hunter safety classes here, is
We do talk about chronic wasting disease.
Feel free to reach out to me with anything else you guys may have. But like I said, I'm happy to be here and I appreciate everybody's time. If anybody else has any questions, I certainly can take those. Otherwise, I just got a four-hour drive through this ice and slush to get back.
Say it slowly and carefully.
I will.
Can the peanut gallery ask a question?
Sure.
Soil testing?
Yes, sir.
If I buy an old deer farm, I gotta keep fences up for X amount of time. What's the testing procedure to get the land cleared to be able to pull fences down?
So if a deer farm had CWD, proven CWD on it, that's the only time the fences have to stay up. So if you buy a farm that never had it, or that were aware and never had it, there is no fencing requirements, there's nothing like that. Otherwise, if you buy a farm that had been contaminated with CWD, it's five years. There's, there's no getting around that. It's actually on the county's recorded title for five years. The DNR and the Board of Animal Health do go out and inspect the fence to make sure it is still meeting standards for five years, the five years. With that said, after the five years, the DNR is very much concerned and research has shown that it is still persistent in the environment. It hasn't been denatured. How could you get it tested? That's a good question. I'd be at University of Minnesota Test, type at their vet diagnostic lab. I don't know how we'd go about doing that. If you contacted the DNR or the Board of Animal Health, our Wildlife Health Division would certainly be able to help facilitate that. But there is no exemption to get out of that five-year window of that fence staying up. And we've had that, actually, in Pine County, we had that where a CWD positive farm got shut down. New guy bought it, wanted to clear the fences, it's very well documented. And he was very unhappy that he had his fence up for five years, understandably.
But there is a procedure to test soil?
Yes, yes, yeah, through the university's vet diagnostic lab, yep. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I will get out of your way and thank you all, have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, be very careful driving.
Gonna be a tough one to follow, though, Ron.
Certainly a lot of information. And, you know, we will think about what kind of action we can take as a county and come back to this topic.
Remember, we discussed this back in October of twenty-one, we asked a resolution.
Yep, so, all right, well, thank you. So our next presentation from the Minnesota DNR Division of Forestry is not going to occur today. Unfortunately, due to the weather, they were unable to get here, coming from the Colquay area and Duluth area. So we are going to move forward with our Highway Department presentation. And I'd like to welcome Engineer Haas. Oh, you're both coming up, all right.
Yeah, I need backup.
Good to see you, Matt.
Um, there's only a few of them and we did the pack yet, so I don't, I don't think we need to do this, unless you guys want the screen.
Let's do it.
Okay, sure.
Because the public may have
Oh, sure. There, no. Cool, perfect. Cook County, twenty fifty, it's a long ways away.
I was gonna say, I thought it was just twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, twenty-three is a long See, now it's gonna come up sooner. No, this, this conversation has started in our department around a lot of different things, but it's all related to the Highway Department. And so we just wanted to start talking about it now. Twenty fifty will come at some point in time. We all know how expensive things are, how expensive people and trucks and staff and infrastructure is in general. And, you know, looking ahead and looking backwards, you know, to see where we've been, where we are, and potentially what the future looks like. The one thing I want to mention right off the bat, and I think we've done a good job of making this clear, and we all know what our current level of service is in the county, we know what it is. You know, it takes a solid day for us to clear out the county, and that's assuming it stops snowing. It's a multi-day event, it takes longer. And so when we talk about this, I want to make it very, very, very clear, if we add miles to our system, if we do commit to any type of additional work, that is, that is hiring an additional truck driver and purchasing another truck, period. One more inch of road, and that needs to occur. Otherwise, the level of service drops. If everybody is okay with the level of service dropping, that's a different conversation. I'm assuming that's not okay, so I just want to say that right off the bat. Looking ahead, what are we gonna talk about? You know, why or why not? Why should we think about twenty fifty in these things? How much do things kind of cost? What are some existing conditions out in the world right now? And then a draft policy that we put together potentially for jurisdiction changes or different scenarios that might pop up throughout the county. So why or why not? Why should we think about this? You know, we can look and we can say, you know, I worked with our MIS department, there's about sixty-seven hundred properties in Cook County. About a third of those properties are on what I'll call non-serviced roads. So what I mean by that is, you know, Forest Service DNR are private roads. I understand there's private contractors, I, but for the sake of conversation, make it a little easy to see what we're talking about. About a third of the properties are on these non-serviced roads. And about a quarter of homesteads are on non-serviced roads. So, you know, it's kind of a lot of folks. We know the county grows. I know actually Administrator Yorkey had just mentioned, fix some statistics about, oh, what was it, the demographer's office, like, we're not growing a lot, or like, projections aren't huge into the future. But we know the latest census showed we did grow quite a bit. So, you know, I think that's, you know, the county, I think it's safe to assume it is growing. Infrastructure, so when we talk roads, bridges, buildings, staff and equipment are expensive, we know that. Graders are half a million bucks right now, plow trucks are north of a quarter million bucks. We'll get into costs, there's some exhibits ahead, but, you know, box culverts can be five hundred thousand dollars easily. These aren't anything fancy, this is just what it is. You know, we've seen a growth in our subordinate districts, we're up to nine now, we just adopted the McFarland one. Typically, each of those subordinate districts only has one bidder in the winter and in the summer. The summer's a lot harder actually to get commitments from contractors. And what's interesting too is, even though we have eight or nine of these subordinate districts, you know, there's basically only like four contractors that then bid on these subordinate districts. So that's not a lot of people. You know, I was trying to pull up some information on our current, current crop, if you will, of subordinate districts. And, you know, we have nine, I think since two thousand, we've, of those nine, we've added six. I know recently, I think it was twenty nineteen, the board, I think we, oh, what was it? We didn't pass one on the Camp Twenty Road in the early two thousands that were two, two that sprang up and then dissolved. I think two thousand one, two thousand three, and two thousand, two thousand four was one. And there's another one that was researched in the early two thousands as well. As far as these subordinate districts, it's a very recent new thing that's becoming more and more. You know, similarly, we get, we've, I've received proposals from folks that live here, from folks that seasonally recreate here, for their roads to become county roads. Here's how many people are here, here's how much tax revenue it generates, here's why it makes sense, you know, et cetera, et cetera. Additionally, you know, the board, at one point in time, we've created no-service zones. So these zones exist in the county as far as, no, we will not provide service here, so that's already an existing thing. You know, there's no benefit to my department for this, there's only more work. And so that's where I think talking about this, though, is important. My aim is to be boring, is to be something common sense. I just want, you know, I don't want to come to you and say, oh my God, I need half a million dollars. I know that's not happening, I don't want to do that. But if it's something that we can plan for, I think we should. Additionally, we know, you know, this isn't on here, but, you know, we're a tourism economy. Whether you want to admit it or not, we are. In doing, you know, some grant applications, you know, I was in contact with Visica County, and they have some interesting statistics as far as just how much of a tourism economy we are. And so it's of our restaurant spending up here, eighty-two percent of that comes from visitors. Of our retail spending, ninety-three percent of that comes from visitors. Gas and service stations, eighty-five percent. Outdoor recreational spending, ninety-five percent. Healthcare, thirty-two percent. So even a third of our healthcare spending comes from people from out of the county. Those are huge numbers to me, I didn't realize it was that high. Additionally, with the tourism side of things, you know, it's, it's, if we allow better access to recreational areas, does that make people come back more and spend money at our local businesses, probably owned by local folks? Things to think about. So, you know, I've also heard if, if recreational places don't have reliable access, does that mean they close? Because, you know, the Forest Service or the DNR, whoever, cannot provide reliable access. So do those places close down, and does, do we lose out on, you know, something there? Things to think about. The next slide we have is just the cost of personnel. So like I had mentioned, you can see the truck costs. Maintenance worker too with benefits, with the current, the new adopted pay scale, assuming they start at the beginning, is about eighty thousand dollars, a little more. Tandem truck, our most recent purchase was two hundred sixty-four thousand dollars. What that does not include is the maintenance of that truck over its lifetime, double it, that's what it is. So in total, right off the bat, when we start talking about adding stuff, I mean, realistically, we're a hair under four hundred thousand dollars in cost. We can look at some recent costs for infrastructure. We haven't done a lot of road projects recently, but if we just touch on roads, Pike Lake Road might be an outlier, it's a major realignment with that. So it's about one and a half million dollars per mile of road for that reconstruction project. South Shore Drive, it's about eight hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars per mile of road. That was a full-depth reclamation, so that was a paving project, so they grind up everything, it's a little more expensive, but it still gives you an idea of cost. Gunflint Trail, we did Trout Lake to Pine Mountain Road, it's about four, a little over four hundred thousand dollars per mile of road. And then Mineral Center was another recent run, that was just paving project, it's about three hundred and sixty thousand dollars per mile of road. Box culverts, typically, if we do a bridge replacement, that's a box culvert, is about five hundred thousand dollars. And this, none of this is fancy, I just want to point that out. Next, you know, what I was curious about when we were developing, you know, our plans that we worked through Highway Committee and, you know, internally, was what do we actually have out there in the county right now? Because the last thing I wanted to do was create a standard that we couldn't even meet internally. I don't think that's fair to landowners, I don't think that's fair to propose. And so you can see out there, you know, what we have. Some of these roads are conveniently by my house, just because I could go out and measure them. So you'll see like, you know, forty-three N is on the north side of Pike Lake Road. I also included North Pike Lake Road. What that is, is a Forest Service road that actually connects forty-three N to Pike Lake Road. So it's kind of a goofy one. And we'll talk about that specific one a little bit later. But you can see some of our other roads on there, North Gunflint Lake Road, Lynn Scoob, Brandon Lane. Brandon Lane we included on there, because in some old resolutions and meeting minutes, we've probably heard of the Brandon Lane standard. There it is. You can see what that is. But you can see a lot of these, you know, what we did in developing this was really wanting to base it off of traffic, how many vehicles are on this road. You don't need a four-lane highway if ten cars are using it, but you need something. And so, you know, what we wanted to see is what existed in the world, and then kind of compare it to state aid standards, and then also adjust accordingly to really just create our own, what do we want? And so what the last couple of pages are, is kind of a draft procedure for how this would work. I tried to encompass as many scenarios as I could think of in this, as far as if, if the folks that live on a road want their road to become a county road, here's that process, here's some metrics you would need to meet, some of the things that we're proposing, and then additionally, the next steps with it. So I don't know if I need to like read through all of this, are we curious? I can, if we want, otherwise, we can just discuss, because this is a very broad meandering conversation. We know what the costs are. If I'm being very, very candid and honest, the point of you know where you bought your property, so deal with it, I'm uninterested in that conversation. I have it a lot. To me, that doesn't address twenty fifty. I'm sure that conversation happened twenty or thirty years ago. Twenty or thirty years ago, we had four trucks. Same quantity of staff, we used to have wingmen, so it was two people in a truck. One guy would hoist the wing, and the person would drive. You know, so staffing wise, we haven't grown much as far as our crew, but our level of service, and I'm sure all of us, or you guys at least, have lived here long enough to see that. So we've doubled our trucks, at least. We've added a mechanic, and that's just in the past twenty or thirty years. Even in the past ten years, we have guys, you know, everyone can remember, you know, ball club would take two days to get plowed. So I just, I want that to be kept in mind, because to me, telling people you know where you bought ends a conversation when I don't know what the next twenty or thirty years are gonna bring. And if there's a way that we can look at this and say, all right, let's start saving up, if we want to, and say, all right, in ten years, we're gonna add a person in a truck, or something like that, or two people in it, two trucks. We can at least start working on that now, so when the time comes, if we do decide to do this, it's boring, it's easy, it's budgeted, it's done. Worst case, we don't add people, and now we actually have money to go build a road. So I guess it just kind of depends how we, how we want to do this. And so I know, I talked about a lot, there's a lot that can, can go into this conversation. And so, I know, I talked about a lot, there's a lot that can go into this conversation. So, I'm going to stop talking, and does anybody have any questions, I guess, comments or concerns?
Thank you. I don't have a question, just a comment. In my driving around in the West End, I'm looking at, there's a new road going in. Not that it would be a county road necessarily, but it could be in the future. So, we're always preparing for that type of thing. Oh, there's a new road. There's a new test. Where did they find that? I didn't know they could put a road through the woods there.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, that's what you're preparing for, too?
Yeah, is that. And, you know, and some of it isn't necessarily, you know, and I guess it would be prudent to look at kind of what we're proposing back here in the policy. It's not saying we're going to take over every road, or everyone's going to petition for their road to be a county road. Some of it could just be, you know, we will work with the Forest Service, like we currently do on the grade, for example. It's an authorized work contract. We don't get paid for it, but we plow the grade. The grade is still a Forest Service road, but we plow it. And so, it could be, you know, I can see something along those lines, you know, ones that come to mind a lot that we talk about internally, a lot, well, and externally. Onion River Road, Bally Creek Road, you know, those are kind of two big ones, I think, that come up. I know, you know, up the trail, thinking about the Bannadad, access to those. And so, you know, maybe those stay Forest Service roads or DNR, but, you know, we plow them. But again, if that happens, it's a person and a truck, like, or the level of service drops. That's kind of where that sits.
Commissioner Mills?
Do we get revenue from funds for the grade?
Nothing. We plow it because it's our only other access out besides 61. It's in our best interest.
For emergency purposes, need to have that.
And to, you know, look at the rain event last May, when 61 overtopped, thank God it didn't blow, but overtopped, the grade was washed out. So, we were actually trying to, like, kind of keep it open. And so, at that point in time, Murmur Creek, good luck. But, you know, and again, that kind of looks at, you know, again, looking at some of this and saying, you know, does the county identify some roads that are prudent to us from a system redundancy perspective? Where, like the grade, I think a person or two is homesteaded on it, but 98% of it's Forest Service, DNR, you know, property. So, would it make sense for us to take it over and, you know, to work and either change jurisdiction on it, so it's officially a county road, or have these kind of authorized work contracts, which we do, and do that? You know, I can think of, you know, well, I don't want to start naming roads from a system perspective, but there's a few.
We do have an obligation because of the contracts.
Yes, for the grade, at least, yes.
We have an obligation. We don't receive money. If we own, if the county had jurisdiction, then we would get dollars for miles, right? I mean, it's small compared to the cost, but it's something we don't.
No, because it would be, unfortunately, and this is location-dependent, too. About, I think, half of the grade, so all the townships, I believe, go all the way up to the boundary wires. So, we couldn't make the grade an unorganized territory road. Is that where you were getting at? So, we couldn't do that. I think we could make half of it, which is kind of goofy at that point, like, why? So, actually, interestingly enough, the grade would then, and its subsequent five-ish bridges that I think are on there, box culvert, anything over 10 feet's a bridge. And all of its regular culverts would just be a pure levy-dependent, tax-dollar road.
Commissioner Mills?
So, explain to me why, people listening, why we want to make or consider having the grade being under our jurisdiction rather than continuing the authorized work contract?
From our county, you know, and talking with kind of the Forest Service, too. It, a lot of times with Forest Service roads, if they don't serve a Forest Service need anymore, you know, they don't want them, to be honest. We are under no obligation to then inherit them. And I think the grade is maybe a different example of that. I know, and I think in past, there might have been some handshake agreements about, "Oh, if you fix it, then we'll take it," type of thing, or, you know, then we can talk about jurisdiction swaps. We are under no obligation to take that road over, or any road for that matter. We could end the conversation now, and you guys can say, "Nope, I don't want to talk about this," and I'll go. But, no, there's not, I mean, I think we already plow it. So, in that regard, there's, on our end, you know, we have a dedicated plow route with that. It's already incorporated. Where we would be incurring quite a bit of cost is in gravel and then in the eventual culvert and bridge replacements on that road. Again, from a system perspective, that's our only exit if something happens on 61. You know, which is what we saw this last, nothing happened on 61, but what we saw this last spring of the cascade being at and slightly above the highway was all of us sitting here going, "Holy crap." And then actually, parts of the grade were impassable. And so, if something happened, you know, we're kind of on our own.
So, it seems like the grade is pretty important to the Forest Service since we only have a couple of private residents along the grade.
Yeah, yeah, so it could, so that could.
It's really important for their operations to make sure that's maintained.
Absolutely. And their standards of what they maintain road are are obviously different than what our standards are. You know, the grades, the Forest Service level of standard is, as long as the Forest Service can get back there. And I shouldn't just pick on them. I think the DNR is the same way. If it serves them and they can get back there, that's all it needs to meet. It doesn't need to make sure that your Honda Accord can go through it, or even your truck, just that they can get back there when they need to. And so, that's where I think, from that perspective, you know, I get that. But then for us, as far as a redundancy perspective, just looking at it, it makes sense for us. But again, no obligation.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I don't see a whole lot of incentive to take over Forest Service roads. There's some that I would like to see staying open. I'm certainly open to changing the jurisdiction, especially from 2050. And so, I think this is really important to have this process in place. When it comes down to what we as a board think we should be taking over, or how things are going to change, I think a really important factor would be our confidence of Land use guide plan update and just where we see the county growing and changing and how we want to try to manage that. And so, I think this procedure is going to be really important. And it's almost like a check and egg conversation, too. If we identify roads that we want to invest in more that are not in our jurisdiction, then it's more likely that the Conference of Land use Guide Plan will include that corridor versus if we have roads that are inaccessible or not as, you know, good a shape, then it's less likely to be included in that Land use Guide Plan, so.
I'd just like to play up to that because this has been discussed at the Highway Advisory Committee meeting, and I have a member here. But one of the, talking about land use and knowing that the state and the feds want us to take over their roads that they are supposed to take care of. We shouldn't just jump into that because we think it's important without thinking about, what do we get in return for that? And we should be talking about getting land for that, making sure we get land that we can use for housing or for more development, not some land way out in the middle of nowhere. But I think that has to be part of the discussion when we're talking to other government places that want us to take over, but they should be doing themselves.
And I'm not, there's no pressure. I'm not getting, like, emailed, yelled at, whatever, about, "You need to do this." But it's just, it's a conversation that comes up a lot. And especially on some roads where, like I said, if they don't serve a Forest Service or a DNR need anymore, meaning, most of the time, those end up being more populated roads, or if they're not doing a lot of logging or whatever back there anymore, and it's just folks back there, that, you know, from their perspective, you know, it's not serving their need. And so, that's where it comes like, "Well, what's our obligation, then, to serve those roads?" You know, kind of to the point of, we have all these subordinate districts now that are popping up with one bidder on them. So, you know, it's kind of one bidder away from no service back on these roads now.
And what's wrong with continuing the SGSD?
I think it puts, yeah, no, absolutely. I don't think there's anything wrong with it. I think, like I said, it's one bidder away from now your road doesn't get plowed. That's real close. And especially when we have to make phone calls, "Hi, please bid," you know, borderline begging contractors to bid.
Which goes back to our housing issue and not having enough working-age people living in Cook County.
Absolutely.
Well, that's what happens when you price up the young families.
We shouldn't have done that.
I know.
Well, I really appreciate that point about the land, the federal and state land, because, well, that's a big conversation and process, any land transfer. But I like where your head's at as far as potential, you know, opportunities down the road. And again, that'll have to be a conversation with those entities, with the Conference of Land use Guide Plan, you know, inside of that as well, so. I don't have a, and yeah, I guess, thinking more about SGSDs, like, I don't think there's anything wrong with keeping it as is. There is a significant risk, and it's kind of like weighing that risk versus how many residents, year-round residences are there and just public safety risk and all that kind of stuff. Definitely worth looking at, but also, it's a lot of money to take on any more insurance road. All that being said, I already think we should have another driver and another truck, so.
And that's where, and I'm not expecting, obviously, I know we're just at a committee of the whole, so there's no decisions. And this is a lot to digest, too. There's a lot to think about with it. But that's where I think, you know, if we look at it and say, you know, do we want to start squirreling away money now? So that we can say in, and it depends how robust we want to be, in five years, in 10 years, you know, we can look at that. You know, to me, that's where some of the palatability of these larger costs comes in. Is if we can take $400,000 or, you know, whatever we decided ends up, what our angle is, and spread that out over 10 years, you know, it's a little easier to save up for, or even longer. A little easier to save up for than, as opposed to coming with an urgent need to do this now, you know. Yeah. And some, you know, a lot of this, too, for what it's worth, I could see being more of folks that are already here petitioning for their roads. That's where a lot of this came from, was that. And that's what we kind of landed on, too, in Highway Committee, was instead of us picking roads, because maybe there's folks that don't want their road to be a county road, and that's totally fine. But as far as the folks that are here petitioning for their road to become a county road, you know, that's what we really wanted to develop a process for in how. And, I mean, it's aggressive, and that's what I want everyone to think about, is that. You know, our SGSD threshold for creation, I believe, is 10% of affected, if you want to call it that, or folks identified in the subordinate district, I think it's 10%, that need to sign off on a yes, and then that's when things can get created, and I think that's how it ends up here. What we're proposing here is the 75%. Because it is, if anyone affected by said road, you would need 75% of those people to sign a petition saying, "Yes, we want this to be a county road." And we wanted that threshold high because once it is, that's a lot on our end into the future. That would be that. So, you know, assessments are not a popular thing up here, but that is what is proposed on how that project gets paid for. If you want your road to become a county road, you will be assessed. And everybody that is affected will be assessed. And once that money is saved up, then construction can begin. Again, draft procedure. We have lots to, this is just the first discussion on it. But I just wanted to get it out there because it'll come sooner than we think.
And I am so appreciative of you thinking about 2050. One of the things I've set as a personal goal for this year is to be thinking about the future of Cook County so that we're planning for it, so it doesn't just happen in a chaotic fashion. We want people to have a good quality of life who live here. We want our kids and our grandchildren to have a great place to be, and that means planning today for it. So, thank you for that forward. Thank you.
Appreciate it. And it really came out of the CIP, too, in talking about buildings.
The Capital Improvement Plan.
Capital Improvement Plan. You know, what do we want, what do we look for in a building? You know, I think the question, my favorite, you know, was, money wasn't an option. But what, you know, what does that look like? And, you know, something thinking ahead that far, you know, buildings 50-ish years, 70 years, would be extras, you know, two extra spots, I think, for a truck and a person. You know, like I said, over even just the past 20 or 30 years, we've doubled our trucks, and we've added a mechanic. I think we've added somebody on the crew as well. So, you know, I'm not going to be surprised if that has to, if that happens again, but, yeah.
Commissioner Mills?
Yeah, I'd like to get back to tourism and plowing because of tourism on Onion River.
Well, we aren't. We do not.
You do not?
No.
Okay, the Volley Creek?
We do not.
But you've been asked to.
Annually.
And. Let's just get that up. So, it's not happening yet.
Nope.
But you keep getting asked.
Correct.
And how long are you going to say no?
Till you tell me otherwise.
We should, as a board, consider saying no until, tourism is very important to our community. We know that. It generates lots of money, and it generates a lot of money in our Visoka County. I guess they want those votes, but I really think we're going to be asked to give to support the 1% tax, whatever you call that, for Visoka County.
The lodging tax?
It's the 1% that goes to Visoka County besides lodging tax.
It's also a lodging tax.
But it's.
Special lodging tax.
Oh, okay.
I don't really think we should get into that because it has to go back and be voted on and say, "Call again." I really think we should have a part of that that says, "It costs us as a county for these things, and let's use it for recreation-related activities in Cook County and make sure that happens down there."
I think that will be on next week's agenda, by the way.
And I think for us, you know, the, in talking with the Forest Service or the, you know, whoever it is, the DNR, you know, and they've offered to pay us to do it. It's not about the money. It's the time.
The time.
It's the commitment to that, you know. And Matt and I have even talked quite a bit about, you know, do we, and about a lot of roads, too, is do we develop a tiered system? Day one, we will hit these roads for sure, and when we have time, we'll do these other ones. To me, that's way too much gray area because then your road isn't getting plowed. Even if it's getting plowed right now as it stands, and it's narrow, at least it's plowed. But, you know, and that could be another thing, if everyone feels differently about, you know, some type of system like that, where we can say, "All right, when we have time, which will be up to us, we will go plow that road or wing back or do whatever." You know, that's something to consider as well. Tiered, however.
I think we should have a lottery tiered system.
Snatched road out of the hat. You get first? Yeah.
Well, that's where we appreciate the Onion River Road. It's plowed privately, but when you have time, you go in there and wing it so that we don't just have a thing like this that a boil can do.
Yes.
But there again, it's when they have time.
Yeah.
Great discussion.
So, you, so the county is winging that road?
So you, so the county is winging that road?
I believe so. I'd have to double check. I'm not 100%.
Is it that like feet or?
No, not belly.
I haven't seen it yet.
But they don't wing Irish Creek Road?
Correct.
Isn't there a discrepancy?
Correct.
An inequity there?
One could say that.
Yeah, so county taxpayers are paying for the winging. But their property owners are paying for the initial plowing?
The, oh, of Onion River Road?
Of Onion River.
I don't know who paid, who pays to plow it.
Visit Cook County?
I thought it was the county.
Might be that.
So the county does?
Visit Cook County.
Visit Cook County.
Visit Cook County.
It's not dollars.
Yes.
Okay.
And for what it's worth, there are, I think the last time I counted, 40 or 50, some odd extra things that we do as far as plowing is concerned. Plowing out trailheads, plowing out, uh, yeah, stuff like that. So, the, and that's where it kind of gets to the conversation of it's not just one more thing, you know, to go do, to go wing back a road on occasion. We already do 50 of those. So it's, you know, we already, we're already in some gray area in some places, admittedly.
Well, it's a significant number, that quarter of red home sets.
Yeah, more than I thought.
Yeah, that's something else.
And that's not to say every single one wants to be a county road. It's just something to look at and say.
Helpful to have the information.
Yeah, it's good. It's interesting to see. But the fact that, you know, when we get the calls and especially, it's all, you know, it's obviously after events, rain events, you know, I brought that one up. Last year, that was one, you know, we got inundated with phone calls of people on Forest Service DNR private roads of, you know, we need help. And my answer was no, sorry. Because if I come to you, I gotta go everywhere else and we can barely keep up with our own. A lot of those roads still aren't fixed. So, you know, it, again, what obligation are we under to do that? I'm not sure yet.
It might be cheaper for the county to buy plows for private individuals and that.
Well, and that's, you know, and that's come up in our Highway Committee a bit is, you know, kind of touching on the, the private side and the SGSD side and the contractor side. Is if those subordinate districts grow more, you know, maybe that incentivizes contractors to hire somebody.
Sure. For them to grow as well.
Correct, yeah, which, I don't know, we're already begging people. I guess to me, I feel like.
I was like, we gotta have the people.
That's right of the problem.
Yeah, so.
So when you're talking about investing in the future and setting aside money. Think it's a good idea down the road? Do I think that's high priority for this board and our budgeting for the next few years? I think we have a higher priority to making sure that we have subject systems and new developments that hopefully are going to be happening. That's, invest in that. It might help down the road with the budgeting. But think about what the root cause of this issue is. I want to go back to item D here under number one.
Oh, in the, sorry.
So have you identified any roads to abandon?
Don't want to say it publicly?
Do we?
I think.
Have you come up with that?
Yeah, yeah, it is. It's just number 44. No, I think, I think that would be, that needs to be a discussion here. That's a hard one. Uh, you would be pulling services away from a road that have services. There are a lot of roads that we currently maintain, uh, that either have no homesteads or one or two. Why do we want to do that? You know, near, again, I'll bring up my house as an example. You know, 43, I think, I don't think a person lives there if I remember right. Sorry, whoever lives on 43. But, you know, one or two, and we plow it, we maintain it, we gravel it, we do all the things to it. Uh, 43N, very similar thing. I don't think anybody is there permanently. It's all seasonal, but we plow.
I've suggested they go up that trail. Two trucks and two people.
Then we could allocate. Well, and speaking of saving trucks, and this gets into a large nasty con, not nasty, a larger conversation of just how intertwined we all are here. We plow Grand Marais. We plow city streets that are not county roads. Granted, the city plows south of 61, um, you know, so some of those are county roads. But, you know, that's another conversation. You know, that's a driver, that's a dedicated person's route that maintains Grand Marais. Do we want to keep doing that? You know, in statute, it says we could pay the city X dollars to plow our roads. That's in Minnesota statute. That mechanism exists. Every other county, to be honest, does that to some degree. Uh, we are the exception. The big lift for the city then is we are already doing all the city roads. So it's not just them picking up our roads, it would be them picking up all of their roads as well. But again, that's a large, large conversation. You know, there's obviously a lot of services the city provides to the county, a lot of services the county provides to the city. So all of that is intertwined, I leave to all of you.
So the county, we're not doing the city.
That's a person.
A person and a truck. Then there's our person and our truck.
In theory.
To expand services out of town.
Correct.
Possibly.
Yep. I could do that tomorrow. Well, I wouldn't do it. We could pivot. That, that would, that, that is something, yes. Where you have that person and truck is readily available. And so hypothetically, if we said Onion River Road, Bally Creek Road, Irish Creek Road, I don't know. Well, that would, that would be different. But those two, for example, we could pivot and do that. That would be a conversation piece.
Well, we have a lot to talk about.
It's a lot. It's a lot.
A lot of information, but that's, that's a good thing.
Ma'am, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I was, um, I was going to give Commissioner Hawkins what are priorities. Clearly, housing is to the top. Anything that can affect that or promote that or support that, roads do. But as far as switching over or gaining ownership, that doesn't necessarily. But in order to afford it throughout these points, we need to plan a way out there. And so if there's five years or if it is, I think it'll probably take about 10-ish years to get the city contracts.
At this rate, yes.
But no, but I think that's, I think that's a good, a good, and I don't know that we need to put one against the other, right? I think if we invest a little bit at a time, then we can get to that later on. So we appreciate you bringing it to our attention. Hope that we do budget for that. I don't know whether or not five years is appropriate or 10 years is appropriate or, or less appropriate time wise. But I think it is appropriate.
Appropriate. That's fair.
And do you not already put aside contingent, contingency dollars for whatever?
Not for hiring and trucks, no. We have an equipment replacement plan for our, like, current fleet.
Okay.
But right now, there's nothing in there to say, well, to add another full-time position would be a conversation with you all, which is this conversation, I think. Adding another truck would, I'm not just going to add a truck without a person, right? Someone's got to write it.
Drones.
Drones. I've said it. I go, if you can find a drone, plow truck. I want to see it. I haven't seen one on the scale that we need though. But not like that, no. So we do put aside funds for like, uh, like local bridge replacements. We just, this year started one for local road construction. So we have those two kind of savings accounts, if you will, but nothing as far as the type of thing that we're talking, expanding staff.
So Madam Chair, this, this conversation is not unlike the conversation we're going to have about buildings, which is really what are the priorities, right? And we know that we have certain buildings that are really central to our ability to provide basic services. The courthouse, the community center, um, the Y, the, the highway campus, the law enforcement center, the recycling center, the TOFTI and the Hoofland Highway garages. Then we have a bunch of other buildings that are not really central to core services that we provide to the community. And so there, there does need to be an exercise to prioritize our, our buildings, our roads to, to understand which are the most important ones, which are the lower-tier priorities. And how do we use that information to, to allocate or reallocate resources? And it's not an easy conversation because there are competing priorities, you know, people have different opinions about how important a building or a road may be. But we have to have that conversation, so.
Any other questions, comments? Thanks.
Yeah, I think, I think with this, we'll keep, I mean, I don't think I need to come back monthly and talk about this. But.
Whenever you get a phone call, ask it.
Yeah, well, it, it happens a lot. That's why I was, we need to at least start the conversation to come up with something. So I think we'll leave it alone for a while, let it digest. And, you know, if things change, things, more things come up in our Highway Committee, you know, for discussion, can edit accordingly, but yeah. Cool. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thanks, ma'am. Sure the Gunflint folks will be happy.
Somebody's going to have some voicemails.
Should we take notes on how many phone calls you get?
Just right now? Yeah, yeah, in the next hour? Yes, yes, we shall. Do I have the next one too?
You do.
Yes.
Nice. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, so what this is, and hopefully we'll talk about it next week. I'm sure you've all at one point in time heard me talk about this grant, the Raze, rebuilding America's infrastructure sustainably and equitably grant. I'm going to say raised.
It's okay.
At least it's a word. It's through the IIJA bill, um, if you remember.
IJ bill.
Oh, boy, infra.
The infrastructure bill.
Infrastructure bill, but what are the two I's? Something Infrastructure and Jobs Act.
Innovative, infrastructure.
Sure, innovative, I don't know. Think of one. International, no. So anyways, we had, we had for some quick background, last year I had applied for this grant to kind of resurface two parts of the Gunflint. One was between the 92s, one, the other chunk was the end 10 miles. It's a real bad pavement, it's worse than the county. At least under state aid system. And, you know, when I had my debrief, we didn't get it, but they were like, do you want to be debriefed on how you did? I said, absolutely. And so the end of, it was the end of October is when mine was, we did it. And basically the feedback we got was, you got close. And I was like, well, I'll take that. This was a, it took me four months to do this thing. This is a massive, massive grant opportunity. Most of the things that we pursue aren't like this. It's hundreds of thousands of dollars, a million tops. You know, but this, you know, what I had applied for last year, I think it was 14 or 15 million dollars. It was a lot. And fed grants are a lot. It's a lot of background, it's a lot of writing, it's a lot of research, it's a lot of data, blah, blah, blah. So the fact that they told me I was close made me very excited. I was more excited. I was like, oh, I just need help. That's where this comes in. And so the reason we're here too is, is normally when we do, and we've talked about RFPs, request for proposals in the past. When we have to do a bridge project or a road project and we don't have the resources in-house to do it. I put out an RFP to the consulting community. They put together a proposal and I pick one on a myriad of things, experience, uh, quality of work, um, cost is obviously a factor in that. And, you know, normally if I put out, I'll call five people, I get two or three back, pick one, and off we go. With this though, because of the quick turnaround of the grant, the fact that it's due the end of February, I had my debrief in October, so the end of October. Meaning from when I got the kind of, hey, you're kind of close, to then having to think about it and then start putting things together. Uh, it's very, very quick turnaround, almost like comically short, I would say.
Quick turnaround for 25 million dollars.
Potentially, yes, yeah. You know, whatever we end up asking. I should stop saying 25. Up to 25, 20 to 25 is more likely what we're going to be anyways. So what I did is, what I wanted to do was really call people that we've worked with, call someone that I knew was familiar with the area, uh, that I've worked with a lot, liked working with. And that I knew could kind of, you know, do a good job helping us with this. And so that's where I started. Um, instead of issuing a request for proposals, I made a couple of phone calls. Statutorily, we can do that. There's a nice little gray area in the statutes that say, basically, if, I forget the verbiage, if you don't have time, you can just do a direct select. And that's what we did here. But I wanted to bring it up and discuss that with you guys, um, with you commissioners, uh, just in the, just to be transparent about it. I didn't have time to put together an RFP. It would take time to write it, take time to issue it, take time to review it. Uh, we had our first visioning session, if you remember, I think it was early.
December.
Yeah, so I mean, that already was a really quick turnaround, um, to get everything together, just to do that. So I guess, does anybody have any questions as far as this?
I'm just really appreciative that we have a group that can assist us.
Yes.
Within this timeframe.
Yes.
That was my concern initially and I, I know the pressure from the meetings that we have and, and the huge engagement. And this is a group that can deal with all that engagement and bring everybody into the same space and do a really nice job with that. So I want to thank you for getting this and I'm very excited that we have the possibility of moving forward with this and doing some great things on the trail.
Thanks.
Commissioner Hawkins?
So you're proposing to spend $72,000 to potentially get up to 25 million?
Correct.
Okay, those odds seem good. What if we don't, what if the $72,000 doesn't work? What do we have in our hands? What do we have for that?
Instead of one big project, we would probably have six or seven smaller projects, uh, which then have been vetted by the public. We know that working in different corridors along the Gunflint or even anywhere in the county, it's always good to have public engagement. So the fact that we did have that turnout at the first meeting blew my mind. I was like, this is amazing. Commissioner Hawkins, you've been at meetings where it's been you and one other person. For a very large project.
Very disappointing.
Yeah, but, you know, the, the input you guys had when you were there, I mean, helped us change the project. It's still meeting needs that we had identified. It's just, I think it's a more elegant solution and we heard from people and we adjusted. And so that's what we did, you know, with, with this project was we heard from 70 people. And, and then some more, you know, that doesn't include the emails and other phone calls and conversations I've had. And we took all that information together and that's what we'll be presenting at the end of January is kind of, here's what we heard, we listened. Now, what do you think? But yeah, it is, it's, it's paying money for a meeting. The maybe on the 20 to 25 million, but I think what we'll get is at least have six or seven projects, maybe six or, you know, whatever it is. Smaller projects identified then along the corridor where, you know, this just goes towards mainly the grant writing. A little bit in the presentations, some preliminary engineering, very early on stuff. But it's still, it's not like, it won't be wasted. It's not just poof, nothing, I have nothing. What we'll have is, is a number of smaller projects then that I can say, here's a grant, a smaller grant that might fit this one. Or here's what I know what to save up for mid-trail now. Or, you know, whatever it might be. But at least it's, it's things that now have been identified along the corridor. So that I can have a, a plan on the shelf, which is like my end goal. And be ready for things and just, here, there's one. Um, and I can work towards that.
And where does this 72,000 come from?
Our, our state aid allocation. So it was just, yeah, so Gunflint Trail is a, it's a CASA, county state aid highway. Uh, we get money from the state every year and so it just come from that.
Other questions for?
Commissioner Hawkins said my question. Really appreciate having some, having some smaller projects potentially out of their smaller scope, so I think that's pretty great. And yeah, to have the resource, like you said, which was pretty huge.
Yeah, it's huge.
So this will be on the agenda next week for action.
Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you gathering the information and all the work you've done to this point to prepare for the project.
Yeah, I'm.
Great public engagement and really appreciate it. It's not easy.
No, but I'm, I'm excited. I love the turnout for it. I think I was talking with, um, Cali at the radio station when we interviewed last. And if every project had that kind of turnout, that would make me very, very happy. if every project had that kind of turnout, that would make me very, very happy. Love public input, that's what, well, it's what delivers a good project, you know, I can say it's this, but if ten other people that are affected by it every day think otherwise, fine, you know.
And I just want to plug into the, you know, when he has his public meetings and one person and one commissioner show up and have an effect on engineers' plans, because I'm not a thrusty of engineers, you know that. All of a sudden, it's like, the public really does, you need to show up before the final design, because it does make a difference.
We had a great turnout for our Alfred Creek project. Small project, affects less than a dozen people, but everyone came. And we tweaked that thing because everyone was there, and it's completely different than what we started with, as far as impacts to the surroundings, to people's homes, solutions came out that I never even considered, and it's because the people were there to provide input. And so then that project is gonna get delivered in a way that not only meets the needs, you know, of our infrastructure, but then fits within, you know, the folks that it affects criteria to. And to me, that's perfect.
Well, that speaks to you and the department and our organization and us commissioners, so thank you for reaching out to the public.
Totally.
It is critical.
And I can't meet everything, I will admit that. I said we can't meet everybody's requirements.
He didn't incorporate everything we did in that public meeting.
Well, some things. I think it'll be good. Anyways, okay, yeah, so that'll be up the contract, we'll have that on the board, if that's okay with everybody, next week. Obviously, we can keep talking about it if you'd like, but.
Well, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Cool, thank you.
All right. Thanks for all your work on the roads this morning. They're all here because of you, your, your team.
That's the staff, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, now, after a long wait, Leah Exstrom is here to talk about our Human Resources attrition presentation. And she's put together some personnel statistics to share with us this morning, this afternoon.
I'm gonna hope my computer doesn't die, but my power cord's right there. Well, thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
My first work session.
What, really?
Yeah. I've listened to them, but never been here to present anything, so.
Well, welcome.
There we go, thanks.
Do you want to enroll?
No, thank you, please. The less, the better. Just wanted to share with the board, just kind of some stuff that's been going on. I mean, we talk a lot about, and you have seen a lot on consent agendas, the resignation notices, the hiring notices, all of that sort of thing, and it's been very widely talked about throughout our country, and basically beyond that as well, the great resignation, the, we can call it what you want, there's lots of titles for it, but it's been a, I'm using a term of tumultuous, because I think it has been, a couple of years around our country, and we are immune unfortunately to what's been going on and what's been seen. So, put together some numbers, just to share with you about the last few years, what our workforces look like, where it's kind of how it's been changing and altering, yeah. So, I can go over all of the different statistics or answer any questions, I mean, it's, it's a lot of information in there, and there could be, you know, a billion statistics that we could just pour in, but yeah, didn't want to hold it long with that, so happy to answer any questions, or, yeah. Bring anything up.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Yes.
I sent Leah a list of questions, and I did get those answers, but in the meantime, I found some more.
Okay.
So, I'm wondering, we, it was last year, had talked about a policy for paying tuition for employees. Have we finalized that?
No, we have not, no. It was talked about in personnel, and that has come up, and actually, if it's not on the personnel agenda, anyway, but it was, yeah, discussed, and we are reviewing what other counties are doing for tuition reimbursement policies as a benefit, and how we might be able to incorporate that.
Yeah, AMC at their December meeting had a number of presentations about tuition and where that is in some, some counties, so.
And it's also been brought up at the Labor Management Committee.
Which made me think, since we did authorize some employees for tuition reimbursement, did they finish their certificates or degrees, or do we, how did we follow up and track that?
And that's a great question, one that I'd have to track down who it was, because that wasn't something, it's followed within the department, I know when employees get this sort of thing for certification, or certi, tuition reimbursement, or money to get a certification, things like that. And I am aware of one that did complete, but would need to follow up, who got that in. Yeah, because it isn't, it isn't a process that we have really embedded in our system very well, so hopefully with this policy that we're developing, that's where you would get then the tracking, making, ensuring that when people leave, they have completed, or if they haven't within, or if they don't stay with us within a year, do they have to pay it back? I mean, there's a number of different avenues that we can explore with that policy to ensure that we're, have the funds out there for staff to utilize, and then also that we are keeping track of to make sure that they're completing the process, or grades, however we want to structure.
So with this small, I'm sorry.
I was gonna just add, that's provided for in our employee policy manual, that directors can allocate training resources for, for that purpose.
Yes.
But there's, there's no contract or no stipulation that we, essentially, we're growing our own, we're enhancing our workforce, but that you, one, you will complete within X number of time, whatever the timeframe is, but then you will continue employment with Cook County for X number of years.
Correct, that is not currently in place. Right now, as administrators, Murphy mentioned, it is very much at the discretion of the department head, and, and should be still too. I mean, they're the ones that can best vet how programs work within their own departments, you know, as it's a valuable, they feel it's a valuable program and worth that, that investment. I mean, department heads, supervisors should very much be involved in that process. But right now, we currently don't have anything in place that requires someone to stay with us for an additional year, or six months, whatever the case may be, or they would need to repay what. And that's a common language that I've seen within other tuition reimbursement policies.
Is there any insurance?
Yeah.
And I just went, so, didn't write the date down right here, but the last time the county board was presented with this kind of report was, I think, two thousand nineteen, before I became a board, but.
Yeah.
Because I followed county stuff back then, I knew it. I went back and found that report, and it had the information from the three previous years, sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, and, which was interesting to look at and compare. But one of the things that I kind of liked about that report was the listing of employees that, hey, I'd forgotten that some had on their own gotten out and gotten their master degree, or different certificates, or volunteering, and I just think, hmm, that is kind of important for our community to know the level of commitment our staff has to on their own go out and get these degrees. So, I guess I would encourage HR department to somehow kind of track that and let's celebrate that as an organization and a community.
Yeah, I love that. I mean, I think that is so important to, and we know there are employees out there right now that are continuing their education towards either their new, you know, their new position that they've just been hired to, or just growing themselves, even, even if it isn't directly related, but just the fact that they are, yeah, interested in those personal growth. I love the idea to celebrate, celebrate that. Not be something, yeah, talk with department heads about, would be a great place to start with that, because they know.
So question I had, Leah, I was looking at the retirements, and have you noticed any change in the age at which people are retiring? Did the pandemic have an impact?
With the age of retirees?
Yeah.
Not typically, and I can pull up their ages right now off the top of my head, without sharing any ages specifically.
Yeah, yeah, not sharing names and ages, but.
No, it definitely, and obviously, a trend nationwide was the pandemic did bring on more retirements. They're also seeing a lot of people coming out of retirement, that is another growing trend at this moment. People in twenty twenty that had retired now are re-entering workforce, albeit at a lesser rate, of course, but that is something that is happening. But no, the age really didn't, as far as retirement goes, wasn't earlier or much later.
Okay. Commissioner Hawkins?
And I had asked you about our turnover rate percentage?
Mm-hmm.
And did, were you able to go back and?
As far as, yeah, and I did pull some numbers.
It's one of the things I looked up, and this was from, I don't know either, Department of Labor, whatever management something.
Bear the Labor statistics.
Anyway.
Yeah.
For government, the turnover percentage was averaged eighteen percent. There were, because it was one of the lower ends of turnover.
We are.
Hospitality is the highest, of course, but government turnover percentage, the average was eighteen percent, so I was wondering how we compared if our turnover rate to.
Well, and looking back historically, of course, our turnover rate was, was lower. It was, I have, like, slightly below thirty, so twelve point nine six percent in twenty nineteen. Twenty twenty, we were at eleven percent. Then we took a significant jump in twenty twenty-one, and we were at just shy of twenty percent, so nineteen point nine six. And then twenty twenty-two, again, that higher rate, and we were at nineteen point eight six. Yes.
Commissioner Hawkins?
Exit interviews, are they on paper? We can write them down? We can track them quantitatively, these people moved for family reasons, these people retired, these people retired, living in their car, whatever the case may be?
I couldn't speak into where they're living when they retire, but, but yes, we do.
Or not retired, but why they leave.
Why they leave, yes, and so we have two forms in our exit interview. We have a survey, and then we have a questionnaire that I, kind of like in an interview, I said, for lack of a better word, where we talk more about why someone left, and then get into, you know, what could the department, did they have everything needed within their department to adequately do their job? How could, what else could they use? Questions like that. And yes, we do keep track of that, and not everyone, I can't make someone participate in an exit interview, but I would say probably about eighty percent do.
And so are they saying they're leaving because they don't make enough money?
They're leaving for a myriad of reasons.
But is that the number one reason?
That was not the number one reason. Although I would say the number one reason is job opportunity.
Sure.
For job growth, and I think that pay could be incorporated into that as well, because when you don't have necessarily the opportunity to grow within the field that you're in, because, you know, we're, it's a small organization, pay is part of that. I mean, you don't have the ability to grow that pay either with a step up to a supervisory position, or with those sorts of things. That's a big one. Moving out of the county is the next, you know, people are moving on for better job opportunities.
And people, people don't usually leave an organization for one reason, there are multiple reasons, and, and people may not be completely forthcoming about the whole range of reasons.
Sure.
You know, maybe they don't get along with their supervisor, but they don't want to talk about that, because it's uncomfortable. So, I mean, we do the best we can to elicit as much information as possible, but, you know, people disclose what they want to disclose.
They do. Some, you can tell when, I mean, everything's fine, everything's fine, you know, and moving away, I'm moving away, yep, you know, and it is a small place, and I feel like, hopefully, they're able to share a little more honestly with me than maybe their supervisor, if they have an exit interview with their department head or supervisor as well, but I still know that they can be as forthcoming about it as they want. I'll just say the stressors of having this higher percentage of turnover in the last couple of years has added as well to, you know, job satisfaction, I mean, when employees are under that high level of stress due to the extra burden of, just the turmoil of who's here, who's not coming in, now we're training, then someone leaves again, and we're starting this process all over again, the extra burden that puts on existing staff of, yeah, training, taking over responsibilities, or just assisting in responsibilities, you know, that, that adds a lot to existing staff and can also be a contributing factor to looking for a new position.
And we've already talked about the importance of culture, too. We mentioned that last week when we talked about the salary increases. It's, it's important to compensate people fairly, but you also have to have an organizational culture where people want to be, and where they understand the, the relation of their work to the purpose of the organization, and so having, having both those things is really, really important.
I think that one nice part about that too is looking at how much we've moved around people internally, whether with, with promotions or just employee transfers within. You know, we, while I talk about us not having necessarily a lot of opportunities for people to advance, there's still a lot of, you know, where there is opportunities for that, you know, we like to really encourage it and hope that it happens, you know, want to encourage employees to apply for their jobs, even in other departments. I mean, that's the other, you know, we watch about people, I see people shifting within the county organization as a whole, just for, you know, personal growth and development, and learning new skills, and expanding into a new area. It's promising to see, I think, how much that has happened.
Leah, what do you see the potential for revisions to kind of a remote work policy to, to kind of redesign some positions so that we can get some people working for us remotely? Granted, there are certain types of positions that aren't on the table for that, but there are probably some, and, and what have you done to explore that?
Well, we've been, of course, expanding our current remote work policy, so that people that work within, like you said, specific jobs, it's not conducive to every position, of course, but we do have remote work policy in place so that we can allow current employees with the direction of their supervisor department head to work remotely, to help ease some of that and draw in other people that, you know, might not want to drive as far maybe they are up the Gunflint Ways or in Grand Forks on the west end, and it's, they want to work for us, but if they can work from home two days a week, great, and save on mileage and have that flexibility, we've really done that. As far as bringing people from outside of the county to work for Cook County, you know, I think that that's been a conversation that we haven't explored in great depth, and I think for a couple of reasons. You know, we are Cook County, serving Cook County, so we want employees to be present and mindful of our county, I think, not to say that we couldn't hire someone, we have people from Lake County that work here, but, let me drive here and work here, but, you know, I just think that that's something we could explore, but it's, it's, yeah.
I just know at AMC in December, there was discussion of, there are a number of people with disabilities that are looking for remote work, and, you know, they talked about that's an opportunity that counties can use if they kind of read behind some of their jobs and look at that as a possibility, so, it's just something I was thinking about, and I know on the Star Tribune, there was an article about remote work, talking about, prior to the pandemic, five percent of the international workforce worked remotely, and now thirty percent works remotely in some capacity. That's a really dramatic change in a short period of time, and so it got me to thinking, how do we keep up with that trend? Because they talked about those that they interviewed, the huge benefits they saw from having that chance of working at home, maybe two days a week, three days a week, whatever.
Yeah. And I think that is important because that is also, you know, we talked about attrition and who's leaving us. People are leaving us because they can get remote jobs and still live up here and work here and we have, you know, most have fabulous access to broadband. And so it's, so that is, we're, it's a competition for us. We're fighting to gain employees that live here, work, you know, live here still, but can work for United Health.
Right.
Yeah, we won't mention any gains, but United Healthcare.
Yeah. So that is.
All right. Thank you. Other questions?
I wanted to bring up again just the cost of turnover. Past statistic for our organization is about 23,000 per turnover. And I was at AMC, they said 120,000 per turnover, which I have a harder time. I had a hard enough time with the 23,000, but like I, I don't know about that. But anyways, that's what they said. And, and that was AMC saying that. That was some other county HR president or was it? Maybe a, maybe, maybe not, you know, anyways, significant cost. So if we apply the 23,000 to our 25 people in 2022, that's a half a million dollars.
On that too, just very antiquated.
Sure, sure. And so, yeah, so conservative number, it would have cost us a half a million dollars last year because of the turnover in 2021, a little bit less than that, you know, 23 people, so 25. But it's still up towards that half a million dollars cost each of those years because of turnover. So if there's a way we can prevent more turnover, that has a pretty great return. Well, potentially, depends on how much we invest in that, what return is. But that was a huge factor in my mind when we're talking about the pay grades. And it's also a huge factor in my mind when we start, start talking about burnout and like having an extra truck driver, an extra truck. Like maybe burnout is less of a factor for the highway department, but depending on the weather, depending on what's required, certainly law enforcement, certainly social services, burnout's very real. And so knowing that turnover is expensive, knowing that burnout contributes to that as well as wages, as well as housing certainly, which wages factor into the housing, what they can find, what they can afford, all of that. It just makes me think that we might be better off if we have an extra to reduce that burnout. Because half a million dollars every year, that's, well, it would be only one pile driver. But when it comes to other personnel, it could, it could help if we had another law enforcement. If we had social services and just the impacts that we're seeing as far as being able to deliver services with reduced staff and not always having that crossover and who's trained in the blood system. It's just, I see a lot of vulnerabilities for us and not just financial. So that was, that was a lot of my thoughts.
You listed a couple of departments that are tricky to hire in period two.
Statewide, nationwide.
Yeah. And you talked about law enforcement, you know, dispatch is an incredibly difficult position to hire and not just for us and keep, I mean, that's, and not just for us, it is yet statewide, nationwide shortages and deputies, chairs.
And teachers as well, too, I mentioned.
Teaching, yeah. Social workers, I mean, these are professions that are high turnover rates pre-pandemic and low entry level, entry into the profession, especially when you talk about law enforcement. And that's been a trend and unfortunately a growing trend. But I do appreciate, because that does, you know, it just, it's all that trickle down, the stress when you're down one, the stress that puts on other staff, that then that burnout rate lifts up no matter what department you're in, being short-staffed and then having to come up and losing that.
Other questions for the? Well, thank you for putting all of this together. It's, it's really helpful to, to look at it over these few years to think about what we've been through, what we're experiencing. It's like, no wonder I feel tired. But it's really helpful to have the data.
When we say anecdotally, and this was looking at my Outlook calendar and counting a couple of weeks ago, Kathy and I roughly did about 130, I would have said 135 because I lessened it a little bit, interviews last year.
Three.
Wow.
So you're pretty good.
Yeah. Well, we got one starting at 15 minutes, so.
On the positive, I, I went to the other statistics. Tenure, average tenure, 8.79. Interesting to compare that to the people who bought, though their average length service, 5.4 or 5-ish. But our current tenure average is 8.79 and the long ones are.
Really long. And we've had, and I went for 15 or more. I mean, I, I think if I went for how many employees have been with us for 10 or more years, you can easily double that if not more than that. So, you know, I think there's, there is some.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
It is that middle, that middle ground where we're losing people and to really look at that and focus, you know, what around five years is happening that, you know, and how can we build on that? We won't stop everyone from leaving, but.
Well, you always come and you have good information for us and we have lots to think about. Today, the future is our topic.
Yes.
Brought this in a nice fashion to us so we can think about how to prepare for.
And always, you know, reach out with any questions or?
I have one last question, maybe Christian Hawkins can help with the perspective here just about what the BLS says about our regional average for tenure for the state. Yeah, I have an idea. It's very interesting.
Okay.
Not, not for government, I could find it for more general, professional, that's hard to know what they're talking about.
Right.
All right. Well, thanks so much and thanks for being so patient and waiting today.
Keep my fingers crossed for the interview.
Yeah.
Me too.
Is it an in-person interview?
No, this is on Zoom.
It's a Zoom interview.
It's time around. We've done a nice mixture, Zoom, in-person.
Doing lots of things differently than we did a few years ago. There have been some benefits. All right. Well, thanks much. Well, we have some minutes of our standing committees, both personnel and public safety and transportation. And is there anything else for the good of the order? If not, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much. Leah, should we leave the furniture set up just like this?
Yes.
Because we have a meeting in 10 minutes.
Oh, hybrid, hybrid?
Hybrid.
Hybrid, yeah. So I thought.